George Bartnik told me to be nice to you.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty. We're here for a work session. Please stand for the pledge. And Tim, can you take the lead, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've been saying that every day of my entire life.
All right, let's move on to discussions. First up is the Bidma, who will be presenting their two thousand and twenty budget, as well as the schedule of events for two thousand and twenty. Steve?
Good morning, all.
And Dan?
Good morning.
Welcome. Good morning. Hi.
Have you met Kristy?
Yes, I finally did. Yes.
Thanks for having us today. So I think everyone has copies or? No.
Yes, absolutely. We have plenty.
Oh, you have. No, that's all right. I have.
Yep.
The hole right here.
Sorry, Tim.
Oh, I know. It's in a bad spot.
It has to go between or to the side.
One or the other. And I always whack my legs on it either way, so.
Yes.
That's me, too.
So I think I'm gonna have to be a little closer.
Frank, go way over there.
Yes. So the first sheet is the bid budget that we're presenting, and then we also gave a corner reference list of events. So you can actually look at the dates. You know, usually with the budget, it's kind of hard because we try to have it by September, right? So we don't have a lot of our dates picked, but since we're a little bit later this year, we're happy to review that as well. So starting off with the budget, you know, the total tax disbursement was one sixteen, seven hundred. You know, a lot of the stuff is pretty similar to years past. We try to take some of the stuff for grant matches. You know, if you look at the capital improvements slash miscellaneous grant matches, we're setting aside fourteen thousand dollars. A lot of this goes to potentially match for the downtown revitalization grant, whatever we decide to do, or miscellaneous other grants. Lamp post banners is another thing that we've been working on, and then also have a little contingency in there for holiday lights, which we work with B and G for, with, excuse me. Other than that, obviously, we have a director, executive director in place, and we're happy to also have a bid ambassador. That's the person that we started last year for downtown cleanup, so three days a week. He walks all of downtown. We have a schedule where he always hits Main Street, and then one day he'll hit by the waterfront in Granjable, another day he does by the train station, and another day he does the north parking lot. So we try to break that up, but he always hits north and south on Main Street itself. So that has been a great project that we put into place.
He's out there all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
He is, yeah.
We're getting, uh, is it Brian?
It's a great idea.
It was a good idea.
Yeah, we were trying to get that in place for quite some time, and Brian does an excellent job. If you see him down there, the business owners really appreciate him, too. So he's always smiling, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback, which is great. Yep. Other than that, you know, just general stuff when it comes to labor, we do miscellaneous ads, marketing. You know, Kristy will talk a little bit about some of the other things that we've put into place, like going to the New York Times Travel Show and worked with the Chamber on that. And then the big thing is the events. One change that we did this year was kind of break out on the comment side. So anything that says Bidma sponsorship, that's something that the bid doesn't necessarily handle ourselves, and we support from a sponsorship standpoint.
Ryan, let me jump in on that point, so especially for edification on our new town board members. The reason why we have cosponsorship labeling on some of these areas and classifications is because there was an agreement with Bidma a number of years ago to provide insurance for these events through the towns broker. Our contract with our broker requires for us to be able to provide insurance to Bidma that, in fact, the events are cosponsored. And so that's why you'll see a delineation on those events on the right-hand column down in the event section as to those which are cosponsored and those which are strictly solely sponsored by Bidma. And that's the reason why we have that classification. So I just want to make that clear.
So the cosponsored events, looking at that, you have the Art in the Park, Alive on Twenty-Five, the Fourth of July Celebration, which is a part of Alive on Twenty-Five, and then you have the Carport Boat Race, the Halloween Fest, and the Bonfire. So those are the ones that we're looking for support from a cosponsorship standpoint. And the other ones are, as we said, specific separate sponsorships through Bidma.
Okay.
And obviously, you saw the events run very high in the town on things that people think are great for Riverhead.
Yes, yes, which is a great thing, you know, and I look at it from a short-term perspective and also long-term.
Yeah.
And, you know, as we get feedback from businesses or operators downtown, we get positives and negatives. You know, you're never gonna put an event in that is a home run for everyone, but, you know, I try to ask them to also look at the long-term from a marketing standpoint, to get people to see what's happening in downtown Riverhead and also believe in Riverhead. You need to get them there, and the events do play a major role in that. I will also say that they take an extreme amount of dedication and time to do, and, you know, we really have a core group of volunteers that we rely on, but we need more help. People like to attend the events, but it's just a lot of dedication and a lot of sacrifice that goes into them. So if people are willing, you know, the Chamber has a way to ask for volunteers through their website, and I think we do as well on our website?
We do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, people can, when they email in our new contact form, they can check off a box for volunteer opportunities.
What do you think about music on the waterfront?
We were doing like the Friday Night Concert Series for a while. That was in the Granjable Park, which was nice, and the bid contributed to that. Then it went to Polish Town, and then kind of came back a little bit last year, but that was a nice addition. But I think anything on the waterfront would be nice. The first thing that popped in my head, looking at the feedback from the pattern book and the fact that people wanted more events, was almost not to events to this scale, but just smaller events would also make a big impact as well that aren't closing down Main Street or taking up parking, or... So I think that really should... When I saw that, that's the first thing that popped in my head.
I love the inclusion of the Oktoberfest. I think that will really be great.
Well, of course you do.
And it's not gonna conflict with the festival at all.
No, so that's very much only in its infancy stages. So we just had people come to the bid board to present the other day. Nothing's been voted on, so it doesn't necessarily have bid support at this point. They don't know how many dates they are thinking of proposing. From an operational standpoint, they don't know what they're gonna ask of the bid to help for support, so it's a possibility. Eastern Towers Alliance was, received a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars worth of grant to help support the five eastern towns. For the town of Riverhead, they're breaking up into three categories: Roseau May, Stay and Play, and also Oktoberfest was what they were planning on. So as that progresses, we're happy to come back in and present to you guys. If you notice, that wasn't on the bid budget, and we're not asking for support at this time for that because we just need to hear more about it first.
That sounds cool. I'd like to... Can you just tell us anything about it?
So right now, they're talking with the breweries within the town of Riverhead to kind of get their ideas of what they would like to see, whether it be authentic Oktoberfest or just like a generic Oktoberfest that just kind of has a name and it's more of like a beer garden per se. But they want to also include that with Reflections. So last year, Reflections did, they worked with Alive on Twenty-Five as they've done since they started, but they also did it with the Halloween Fest, and that was kind of like their focus. So as they're trying to get more themes into it, they also want to tie in Oktoberfest with Reflections, too, so.
Frank has his leather suspenders and his shorts. He's already...
I have the hat.
Wait, isn't it called leader hose?
All the charms.
The feedback so far is that everyone wants very authentic Oktoberfest.
Yes, I'll be wearing my green hat with my charms.
Just to clarify on that, so the three seasons of events is actually run through Eastern Towers Alliance, so it's not a bid-run program, and it's regional through all of eastern Long Island. So I was working with the North Fork Promotion Council the other night. They're having a big part in it as well. The reason why Oktoberfest is kind of being concentrated in Riverhead is because the North Fork is just saturated with, you know, pumpkin picking and all of that from September through October. So I think Brian of Eastern Getaway, Brian Yeluka, he was trying to concentrate on Riverhead, keep it in Granjable, and it's a perfect spot for it, utilize some of our local breweries. There's some new ones in town, and then from there, branch out to restaurants and give Riverhead a little piece of that pie.
Well, Brian has shown us what a great park we have that I think people didn't even realize were there.
Right.
And I think it's really smart to have something in the fall when we do have such a saturation of people here. Maybe it will divert some of the traffic two different ways.
Yes, yeah.
It's all good.
We had a lot of returning visitors to Reflections this year, and, you know, Brian told the story. I believe the last one that they did, the second to last one, there were some people that got dropped off by a Lyft or an Uber driver, and he walked through, and he found it fantastic. So he came back with a following event weeks later and brought ten people with him. They stayed in town. They had dinner at the Preston. They found Brian at Reflections. He told them where to go to have drinks. They walked all around, and they came from Lynbrook, I believe. So, I mean, there's people, definitely, there's a draw. People are coming from out of town for it.
And to your point of that, they had, it's nice when the bands are there.
Yes.
Or you had the Ballet Company has been there, too, which is really cool.
Yeah, yeah, even music on the waterfront. You know, I think that the one band that they had in, I think it was a high school band, too, and that was a big draw.
I know. I taught that guy in first grade.
I'm gonna meet with the person who runs the Montork Music Festival, which is a huge, and he's got all the connections. And I think we'll start the conversation.
Okay.
That will actually be tied into the Roseau May. I believe that they are, they're connecting that into their three seasons of events.
Perfect.
Yeah.
See what we can do.
Yeah.
Alive on Twenty-Five, I'd see you are going in a different direction in terms of cutting back from forty-two.
Sure. Yeah, so we, you know, after some deliberation, and there's a lot of contribution from different vendors making a sizable investment into this, operations on the bid, and even the town when it comes to costs with the PD and such. So obviously, the Fourth of July or the one around that is great. The fireworks are a big draw. The goal this year is to cut it down to two, and a lot of some of the feedback that we've received is what we can do to make it more family-friendly. So the second event, we want to focus on taking Peconic Avenue, really making that like a kid's zone, and really pushing hard for that. We're in talks of trying to put a subcommittee together just with this goal, so getting people from the rec department, the library, the science center, the aquarium, all together, see what we can do to really make this a substantial focus for the kids. So we're in the works. We got feedback from some of the vendors that we had, and, you know, in the past, the attendance on the first one's been great, and then the other three have been hit or miss, sometimes great, sometimes not. So what we would like to do is focus on two events. As the event continues to grow, then we can consider adding more. That's another aspect of it that...
With the rain date included, right?
I was gonna say.
Still a rain date, yes. So we have July twenty... July second is the fireworks, August thirteen is the kid's zone, and then obviously, the twenty-seventh of August is the rain date, which we try not to use that word, but...
Let it happen.
Yes, yes. On top of the events, which we all know are great for downtown, we'll talk about a few other things, if you guys don't mind. I don't know if you want to talk about some of the changes to the website?
Sure. So we recently, we rebranded the Riverhead bid as downtownriverhead.org. We did a lot of research into other bids and cities, and we looked a lot at the Boston bid website, San Diego as well, and they all run websites that are downtownboston.org, downtownsandiego.org. They're all run by different bids. So we really wanted to put a focus more on Riverhead as a visitor and tourism place, and pull in all the information from different restaurants, places to stay, things to do, pull in itineraries, calendars, things like that, as well as showcase the history of Riverhead. So we went live about two months ago with the website, so it is downtownriverhead.org. We have a community calendar on there that is posting all the events from, you know, everything from the science center, the aquarium, to, like I said, happy hour, things going on at the restaurants.
Social media tie-ins.
Social media. Yeah, we're pulling in, definitely amping up the social media. We're also looking to host the Alive on Twenty-Five website right on the downtown Riverhead website, and moving forward, the same thing with Halloween Fest and any of the events that we run. It just makes sense to have everything in one place. It also works great for organic SEO when people are searching for things. It's always going to point downtown Riverhead, which then, you know, increases the value to the restaurants and the business listings and everything else that's on there.
I encourage our residents to check it out because it is really well-done, and there's a wealth of information in there to keep up to breast of what's going on in town.
Absolutely.
It's very important to know.
And just as for things downtown, and it's not a bid thing, but I am a big fan of the farmer's market, and if people in Riverhead happen to come down to the farmer's market, you really should. It's from ten to two on Saturdays, and every time I go, it's very busy, and it's bringing a lot of people to downtown.
That's on the website, right?
It's on the website, and we have also, so we have designated advertising space every month on riverheadlocal.com, and we've given the farmer's market our ad space on the website there as well. That was nice.
Some of the things we talked about, the bid ambassador, which has been a huge help, and I think that's something I want to continue on. One of the things we want to focus, the bid, we'd like to focus on alleyways in twofold. One is the security and lighting of the alleyways, and the other is what we can do to kind of bring an artistic flair to it. So we're focusing on one alleyway right now, which is a little bit west of, or, excuse me, if you're on Main Street, east of Parabel, to look at that one first to see what we can do. So we're working with the artists from Reflections to see how we can, you know, put an art installation in there that adds to the safety and security of the alleyways. So we want to start with that one, and then continue to grow to look at some of the alleyways or walkways, whatever you prefer to call them. Bob Castaldi said that he would be very open to looking at the one next to the theater, so we want to continue to look at that. Yeah, so we're working on a budget right now and waiting on some of the concepts that the artist wants to propose, but we'll be happy to share that information with the town as that progresses.
I think that's a great idea.
What kind of lighting are you thinking of? Did you get that far?
Uh, it was, you know, it was kind of like rings above, you know, as you walked over. There was like some sort of sensors, so it was kind of interactive as well, but it would also have, it could like, what, change colors as you walk through, but it would still have like a white light, which would help with the security from a long-term standpoint as well, so. Again, still in its infancy stages, but I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with.
Did you have to bring electric there? Because we had talked about this before, but I thought you had to bring electric.
The parking district, there's a pole right there at the south side of that alleyway, so that would be the tie-in. Don Thomas is also helping us with that, too, and we're trying to see what we can do, what the town can help as well, so. Trying to keep everyone...
That's great.
Yeah, that should be really nice.
Creativity.
Yeah, yeah. Even if you just Google that, there's some really, really cool stuff out there that some towns have done.
It just gives a vibrant look to downtown. If you go through towns that have lit up and decorated their alleyways, it just, it's like a festive look. It just gives a feeling that I should be here doing something because it's really nice. And I think that's gonna be a big help downtown with sign poles, the flags.
Yep.
On the poles, it's gonna really clean up downtown.
Yeah, and to that comment, we're very close on the wayfinding signs and also the banners. So, you know, the town, and with the help of Townscape, which the bid is thankful for, they donated some proceeds to go back towards buying the pole arms on the bottom of the poles so we can hang the banners. The bid is looking to put banners in place that say, "Welcome to our store downtown." We have, Kristy's been working with the people from Color Hour Town.
Oh, Color Hour Town, yes. So Color Hour Town is a collection of adult coloring books, and they have, they've done a few different towns, but they do have a North Fork coloring book, and I believe there's ten buildings in this coloring book that are downtown Riverhead buildings that fall into the big district. So what we're doing is we're taking these sketches that they have, they're currently on display at the Riverhead High School. They've donated them to the high school, and they are, but they've also donated the files to the bid. So some of the banners that we have, we're going to take these colored sketches and use them as a historical reference to some of the buildings that fall downtown. So they'll be colorful. They're not, you know, black and white like the coloring books are, but it'll be, you know, just something to add a little fun and whimsy to some of the banners.
And the color scheme ties directly with the wayfinding signs as well, so.
Yes.
The world is more whimsy.
I liked when Urban Design Associates was here, they were here. They talked about the amenity zone. They showed the, I'm sure you guys saw where they showed the sidewalk thing, and they were simple changes, and of course, you're doing some of the things already, but I also liked, was it, are they called plank signs? What are the signs that?
Oh, the ones that hang off that...
Yeah.
I thought they were cool.
Yeah, instead of like A-frames as well for businesses to use that, that's nice.
And I think we might want to look to some of our codes for downtown as far as like sandwich lines and outdoor seating and all that kind of stuff.
Some of our businesses have reached out to us and asked us to speak to you about that.
Well, that's something that I think that we need to look at.
Sure, absolutely. Last thing that I had was the, another goal for the bid was obviously safety and security, but it's with the cameras. And I know the town was able to get some funding to purchase the cameras with the help of Dawn, I believe, and her team, and I think Chief Edgar Miller's been working on that. So I've been talking with him directly to see what the bid can contribute to help expedite that process. I know the goal was, or priority was Granjable Park and the train station. We have the cameras, but we want to get them in the parking lots and also throughout downtown. So the bid is very interested in taking some funds to help expedite that process, to put them in place, especially if we have the hardware.
I think they're on phase five at the moment.
Okay.
I know he's moving along, and I believe should be operational hopefully by the summer.
Yeah, he said that he needs a certain amount of funds in order to get the parking lots done. And on top of safety and security, the other issue that the downtown businesses deal with sometimes is ghost dumping. And that's come up from time to time. So this would help twofold: safety, but then also hold people accountable when there is ghost dumping, which is an issue that the downtown businesses are dealing with, so.
I'd like to get the sign, the cameras, right? I feel like it was a year ago that I went originally looked at them at the company. And I think they're all installed, but they're not hooked up is the issue, right?
Yeah, and I can actually...
They're not feeding in yet.
That's correct. I'm pleased to report, actually, I spoke with Altis yesterday. They've contracted with a private contractor to actually run a live feed from those cameras directly into police headquarters. And so they'll be doing that very shortly.
They're also providing Wi-Fi.
Yes.
Which is great. You're gonna have Wi-Fi?
Public Wi-Fi, that's great, yeah.
Downtown.
Working on that as well.
Okay.
So I think it was, there was no charge, right?
Right. Well, it's definitely on the feed of the security cameras. I'm working on the other issue as well. I negotiated actually a waiver of the eleven thousand dollar fee, so they've waived that.
If you have an Altis account, I guess you can log in for free to get Wi-Fi?
Perfect.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
But they don't have the, all the downtown cameras. There's primarily just by the train station in Granjable Park.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's the first phase regarding live feed hookup.
So what the bid is interested is getting the downtown cameras installed, because they don't have funding for that at this point, so.
Those are the extra phases we need to get done and completed.
Yep, well, we're very open to making that conversation happen.
We really appreciate that.
Great, good.
And Dan, you'll work, too, with Altis and...
Thank you.
Optimum and Cable and all the names they've gone by. Dan is our resident expert and always cuts a, or works out a really good deal with us.
Thank you.
Now, maybe we... If we get Wi-Fi at the planning department.
That's, all right, anything else?
Thank you. Thank you for the support. We appreciate it.
Great, so I will submit both the master contract for your approval in March third meeting as well as the Live on Twenty-Five.
No problem.
Thank you all very much.
Very good. Thank you.
How's it going, Dan?
Steve, thanks for all you do downtown. It's incredible. I don't know how you spend any time at home with all this stuff.
It's a family affair. Kelly volunteers a lot, too.
Okay, moving forward, next on the agenda is a discussion with Alan Corey of Choo ninety-four. He'll be presenting his Eagle Scout project to us. Alan?
It's Corey Allen.
Oh, Corey Allen.
Yeah, it's reversed on you.
It's reversed on my records. So Corey Allen, welcome.
Good morning, Corey.
Morning.
Morning, Corey.
So this is just a sheet of photos taken from the Wells Family Cemetery.
Just don't put anything on that.
From the Wells Family Cemetery, where I'm proposing my project. And then I have a draft, a rough draft of a sign, a design for a sign that I'm proposing putting on the location. I only have four of these right now, but these, yes, these are articles referring to work that was previously done on the site as well as the history of the area. And then I have a sheet that just briefly outlines what my plans are.
Oh, I know that, yeah. This is the one over on Epcal property.
You're prepared here.
Yeah.
Very good.
When you walk in the trail, you pass this.
If you could just pass this.
Sure.
So for my project at the Wells Family Cemetery, it's located right along the Epcal bike path. It's off of River Road, and most, when you go past it, you can easily miss it from the road because it's set back, but it is noticeable if you're going around the bike path, which is how I noticed it. And then it was brought, the project was brought to my attention by Mr. Bartnik, who suggested just doing some work in the area, and from there, I got involved with Mr. Kazakhovich, and I had a meeting last week with Mrs. Giglio and the town engineer and Mr. Kazakhovich to discuss the project further. And then just on Monday, I had a meeting with the landmark committee, who said that other than having a few questions, that everything sounded set great and ready to go. And at this point, I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Wines. But other than that, everything on my project is pretty much lined up. I've done some research. I contacted, I contacted Peconic Monument Works to do, to get a little more information on it. But what I'm proposing is, as in the photos, there are two broken headstones on the property that are leaned against their bases, and I'm proposing repairing those and putting them back on the bases, which is what the questions from the landmark committee were in reference to. So I'm waiting. They're going to contact two experts they have and get back to me with information on how to proceed with that aspect of the project. But other than that, we, I would be clearing up some of the underbrush and things that have grown in there and just cleaning up the area a little bit. And we proposed, initially, it was proposed to have a gate placed in, but after talking with the deputy town attorney and Mr. Bartnik, it sounds like we might try and go with just having an opening installed in the fence that's around that area because that would be a cheaper option than having a gate put in, and it's also less maintenance than having a gate. And we would have this so that people could come off of the bike path and into the cemetery. And Mrs. Giglio had mentioned at my meeting last week that there's the possibility of getting a bike rack put in outside alongside the bike path. That way, people can park their bikes and go into the area. And I'm looking to, I spoke with Peconic Monument Works, and Mr. Warner is willing to be on site when, to donate the materials and be on site with the, when we are doing the repairs of the headstones to provide advice and some guidance on the matter. And other than that, I'm just planning on, the only other aspect of the project is we were discussing the possibility of installing a, like, two benches in the area and then maybe having a small path. Ms. Giglio proposed a paver's leading from the opening into the cemetery, just as like a little way to make it look nicer.
Corey, can you give us a little background on the Wells Cemetery?
The background that I've gathered is on the sign sheet, the date is off for the earliest one. There was a typo when getting it printed up, so we will fix that when it's made. But the earliest gravestone was from eighteen thirty-nine, and basically, it was a family-owned cemetery, and there's about, I believe, I believe it says sixteen. Sixteen family members are on the site. And there, as well as having headstones, each grave has a footstone that marks out the edge of it. So there are more than sixteen marks on the site. It's a relatively small location. It's just off the bike path, and it, no one, it's been a ban, not really abandoned, but like no one's been maintaining it for a while since, I forget the name, it says it in there, but a gentleman from the nearby sportsman club did do some work there a few years back, and he repaired one, there were three headstones initially broken. He repaired one of those and then did some land work in the area, cleaning up the grass and everything. But then he was no longer able to do that. He, I had learned from Mr. Bartnik that he got sick and couldn't be, continue with that work and the maintenance of it, which is how it came to my attention as an Eagle Scout project because it's fallen like unkept. So other than that, that's pretty much the history that I've gathered on it. And in regards to the project, I organized with Mr. Kazakhovich. We had the town come in and remove a few. There were two dead trees on the site and a large branch hanging in a large tree at the center of the cemetery, and we had those removed. That way, there's no potential injuries when working on the site.
Corey, as you know, I'm sure from being up there, just be very careful with the ticks.
Yes.
Because like, the last time I visited that cemetery, I came out and I just hit like a nest of them with my leg, and I was covered. I was amazed at how many were there. But on the good side of it, by... But on the good side of it, by you, by it being maintained and cleaned up, you're going to have less of that there.
Yes, that's one thing was we were looking to the grass on, around the outside. There is an open like pat, path section in front of the headstones that's very cleared out. So I stuck mostly to that when being on the site. But my goal is to clear out some of the overgrown grass where the ticks would be.
Got Wells, Wells and Edwards, family names.
So you have a ten-point plan, I like this.
Yes.
And I like the fact that it's off a trail and you're going to put a bench in if somebody.
Yes, we're looking into the benches. If, I have to get a little more information on that aspect, but ho, hopefully I'll be able to have at least one or two put in. That way, if people go in, they can sit down.
This is a very well researched project.
Yes, I've start, I started it back in October, so I've been doing my research since.
Congratulations on that.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations, that's good to see somebody produce a project so comprehensively and love to see it, I can't wait to see it.
I love everything about it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you for coming before us.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I have to say, uh.
Would you like to hold on to the photos?
You can hold on to, I want to see the real.
Yes. I just wasn't sure.
I don't want to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
So what would my next step be on, as, uh, with the town?
I think run for office at this point. Your presentation here today will involve people like you.
What did you do, a resolution or nothing?
Who were you, you were working with?
I, I was working with Mrs. Giglio and.
Okay, she'll put it through.
All right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
They'll let us know.
Have a nice day.
You too, thank you, Corey.
Thank you. Back to school. You didn't give him mom, you didn't give him the day off.
Thanks, Mary.
All right, I think that's it for, uh, discussions. Moving forward, um, we're going to move on to resolutions. Devin, can you please read the, uh, resolutions?
Just give me a second here, Devin. Oh, you, look, come on up. I thought you were going to start reading them right there.
He's a tough actor.
Let's go, let's go, let's go.
Did you have a list?
I'll listen to that.
Okay.
I'll take it, you'll take it.
It was very thorough.
Very thorough.
Very impressed.
Yes.
Very impressed, very impressed.
We're ready?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so resolution number one, approve special event application for Hallackville Museum Farm Horseradish Festival.
All right, spring is here.
Yes. Number two, approves the special event application of Hallackville Farm Museum Long Island Fleece and Fiber Fair. Number th, number three, approve special event application of Home Depot for annual plant sale. Number four, approves chapter two fifty-five resolution of Long Island Moose Classic Car Club Show. Uh, number five, accepts grant and adjusts budget for Justice Court. Six, accepts the retirement of a police officer. Seven, appoints a calling clerk for the, to the recreation department. Number eight, ratifies the appointment of a provisional wastewater treatment plant operator three A. Number nine, ratifies the appointment of a town budget officer. Number 10, setting terms and conditions of employment for town budget officer Lisa Dower Richards. Number 11, ratifies the appointment of a secretary to the town supervisor's office. Number 12, setting terms and conditions of employment for Donna Sadowski, secretary to the town supervisor's office. Thirteen, approves employees' requests concerning accrued time carryover, accrued time carryover. Number fourteen, authorizes the supervisor to execute memorandum of understanding with Civil Service Employees Association, Inc. Number fifteen, ratifies the appointment of an interpreter for police department and justice court. Number sixteen, ratifies the overnight stay of a, of one police department employee. Seventeen, authorizes attendance at the twenty-twenty New York State Town Clerks Association Annual State Conference.
What is number, I'm sorry, what is sixteen? What is the overnight? Tim, do you know what that is?
Let me get to it here, I'm going to go back to it.
Yep.
Oh, this is, um, our highway officer, Officer Cavan, who goes upstate for training.
Oh, okay.
Where when they do the truck weigh-ins, when they pull trucks over on the highways and they do scales and weights and measurements. This is a, a training he has to do every year, so to get certified to do that.
I think it's mandatory, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes, absolutely. To write certain tickets under the VTL. Actually, it's not even under VTL, it's under a different section of law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it has to do with the weights of trucks and the big units that are on the roads and what they're carrying and all that stuff.
That's good, because we got some big wheelers flying down our.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, eighteen, authorizes budget officer to attend NYSOSC accounting class. Nineteen, authorizes purchasing agent to attend US Department of Justice Collusion Strike Force Antitrust Crimes Training. Twenty, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Twenty-one, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Twenty-two, authorizes town clerk to publish and post public notice to consider a local law to amend chapter one oh-five of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Boards, Commissions, and Councils. Twenty-three, authorizes application to Suffolk County for HUD home funds and authorize supervisor to execute grant agreement. Twenty-four, awards bid for one New York vent, uh, one new Ventrac thirty-four hundred Y compact tractor. Twenty-five, authorization to publish and post bid for buses for summer recreation and teen camp trips. Twenty-six, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for the twenty-twenty annual construction contract. Twenty-seven, authorizes to publish and post for the twenty-twenty annual procurement contract. Twenty-eight, sets fees for usage of recreation and other town facilities. Twenty-nine, Sergeant's Recreational Center Sewer Extension Capital Project eight one nine oh-two budget adjustment. Thirty, authorization to correct typographical error extending bid contract for water meters and accessory equipment for reasonable equivalent and repair to meter-reading equipment for the Riverhead Water District. Thirty-one, authorizes notice to bidders, test well program phase one, installation of groundwater monitoring wells, capital project number four, Riverhead Water District. Thirty-two, authorization to purchase Call Res twenty-one oh-nine for the water district.
And that's it?
Great, thank you, Devin. Okay, I just want to make a note, uh, at our last work session, there was, uh, some discussion towards the end regarding, uh, how to go into executive session. According to the Association of Towns, uh, the way that we have been carrying out our, um, work session process is the most appropriate. I also have here legal documentation of stating that, uh, it, it, this matter falls under the, uh, open meetings law of New York State. And we will continue to follow the open law, um, uh, the open meetings law of New York State. And we will continue to go into executive session the way we have been going. Okay, so I just want to make that point. So if I can have a first and second to go into executive session.
Yeah, just before we do that, that, that wasn't really what was discussed. What was discussed is the wording in, on the agenda, that's what was discussed. The procedure has always been correct, there's, there was no doubt in that. It was just the wording to make it a little more clearer what it is we were going into exec session before.
And you cannot identify a particular department or employee because they're protected?
No, you can't, you definitely can't identify employee.
Right. With that in mind, can I have a first and second to go into, uh, executive session? First on the agenda is personnel, matters surrounding vacation buyback of a CSA member. Second, matters surrounding a CSA class action grievance. And third, lastly, matter, matters surrounding the salary of a new employee. Second topic will be legal discussions of matters surrounding pending litigation in the matter of, uh, Joan Fleischman versus the town of Riverhead. The second legal matter is discussions of, uh, surrounding pending litigation in the matter of, uh, Ketabon Open Joski versus the town of Riverhead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Thank you.